Check one, two. Test audio. Check one, two. Test audio, two.
If I can hear you loud and clear.
We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis Inuit, and other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of the national anthem, followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Thank you. I see all members are present at today's person, except for Counselor Tor. Do we have Counselor Tor online?
That's correct, sure.
Is he online?
Yes.
Because we have all members participating. We're now at item two, approval of the agenda. We had the clerk's updates.
Three may have round. There are a number of updates that were added to revised agendas. 7.1, delegation from Amanda Corbett, a Bolton resident regarding 18.14, concerns regarding the proposed approval of zoning bylaw 194, 2024. 7.2 is a delegation that will be published today. It was received before the deadline from Peal Mehta, Brampton resident regarding 13.1, a staff report, application to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw for Zero McLaughlin Road. Ward six. 8.1, government relations matters. The presentation was published. 10.2.2, the report was published. 10.3.1, the staff report was published. 10.3.2. There was a note that this may be withdrawn.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll refer.
Okay, thank you. And 12.4, the audit committee minutes were published. 12.5, summary of recommendations from the planning and development committee. Recommendations were published. 13.1, staff report was published. This was referred from the planning committee meeting. And 13.2, staff report was published. It was also referred from the planning and development committee meeting. 14.1, correspondence regarding the proposed approval of zoning bylaw 194, 2024, and bylaws 18.3 through, sorry, 18.3 to 18.10, as well as 18.31, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38. The bylaws have been published.
Okay. And we have, are there any new business? Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to withdraw item 16.2, which is a discussion item on my request regarding the expansion of the Salvation Army Family Resource Center. There's some information that we need from the Salvation Army Family Resource Center folks with regards to the expansion of their shelter, and so I'll bring that up at a future meeting. So just withdrawing that item. The other thing is that I'd like to add an additional bylaw regarding the committee report from last week, 11.2.1, which was approved by committee in regards to the taxi-cab tariff increase and renewal fee reduction. I spoke to staff about this. The clerk has the amendment to the list of bylaws, essentially just approving what we decided last week. Thank you.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add a discussion item on Resident Ronald Webb.
What item would that become?
It'd be 16.3, I believe.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Singh.
Sorry, to the clerk, was another announcement added yet, or no? No, okay. Counselor Bro, I can't add the note. You had to add the note.
Counselor Bro.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. I'd like to add an announcement for Ironman regarding our Ironman announcement.
That will become...
It's the second announcement.
6.3?
Yeah.
Right, 6.3?
Yes.
Okay. See no other items. We have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Fortini to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Motion carries. We're now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Is any member of a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Seeing none, the clerk will note for the council. Adoption agenda, we have a motion, we have the following council minutes before us today. 4.1 minutes, City Council regular meeting, November 20th. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, we have a motion moved by Counselor Plushy and seconded by Counselor Power to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor? Motion carries. This takes us to consent motion. I will read the item. Relevant agenda items, members can identify any items to be held for debate. 8.1, government relations matters. 10.21, staff report occupancy standards in overcrowding rental accommodations. Staff report, Municipal Service Corporation. 10.31, staff report amendment to 2024 development charges by law. 10.32, staff report prepayments agreements to incentivize housing developments.
No, defer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
10.51, staff report approval of various park naming requests. I apologize, you can put 10.31 if that makes sense. 10.32 is what we want. Okay, 10.31 in consent. 10.51, various park naming requests. 12.1 minutes, Planning and Development Committee. 12.2 minutes, Committee of Council. 12.3 minutes, Committee of Council, November 27th. 12.4 minutes, Audit Committee. 12.5, summary recommendations, Planning and Development Committee. All accepted, it is finished business. If you have to hold there or not. Unfinished business? Do we need to hold for that?
Yeah, we should hold it off.
13.1, staff report application. Okay. Hold 13.2. 14.1, concerns or proposed approval by law from Franka Pisani and Carmela Enzamo. 16.1, referred matters list. 19.1, closed session minutes. 19.2, closed session minutes, Committee of Council. 19.3, closed session minutes, Audit Committee. 19.4, report authority to renew a lease, Ward one. 19.5, report impacts associated with election science. 19.6, report request deferral development charges, Ward 10. Report labor relations negotiations, 19.7. 19.8, report proposed pending acquisition of land, Ward one. And we have to hold 19.9 for a verbal update. Okay. The clerk will summarize those items to be included on the consent motion for approval.
Through you, Mayor Brown. The following items will be included on the consent motion. 10.3.1, staff report amendment to the 2024 development charges by law. 10.5.1, staff report approval of various park naming requests. 12.1 minutes, Planning and Development Committee. 12.2 minutes, Committee of Council. 12.3 minutes, Committee of Council. 12.4 minutes, Audit Committee. 14.1, correspondence regarding item 18.14, the approval of bylaw 194, 2024. 16.1, referred matters list. 19.1, closed session minutes, City Council. 19.2, closed session minutes, Committee of Council. 19.3, closed session minutes, Audit Committee. 19.4, report authority to renew a lease in Ward one. 19.7, report labor relations negotiations. 19.8, report proposed or pending acquisition of land.
We have a motion moved by Counselor Bro, seconded by Counselor Pisani to approve the consent motion. All those in favor? We have three announcements. The first is proclamations, and we have two proclamations that I will be proud to read out. The first is Salvation Army Week. The Salvation Army is the largest nongovernmental service provider in Canada, has been serving men, women, and children across our great nation for over 135 years. The Salvation Army is distinguished by its compassionate commitment towards those it serves across a broad range of services, programs, including food banks, homeless shelters, thrift stores, mental health counseling, correctional and justice services, and family services, and many more. The Salvation Army celebrates and recognizes the hard work and dedication of the countless volunteers who have a Canadian volunteer of the Salvation Army deliver, to deliver the many critical services it provides. The Salvation Army's annual Christmas kettle campaign is a symbol of hope to people who receive the Salvation Army in Brampton each year. So we declare December 16th to 20th as Salvation Army Week in the city of Brampton. Do we have a representative from Salvation Army here? Okay, well, please come forward, and I'm sure you can find some volunteers amongst council to man a kettle. But thank you for the great work you do, and you have a moment to respond if you like. Yes, right, right in front, yeah. Oh, right, right here.
First of all, I'd say thank you very much for, Mayor Brown, for the willingness to be, allowing us to be a part of the Salvation Army Week next week. I also want to say thank you, Counselor Rod, for helping us at Santa Breakfast a few weeks ago. He makes a mean pancake. Thank you. Salvation Army is honored to serve the people of Brampton and to give them hope today. Many people are struggling to make ends meet and have challenges providing for their families. We hope to be a light in their dark times and to bring them a sense of peace in the midst of challenging circumstances. Our goal is certainly to support and serve those that we can in a number of ways, and to make a lasting difference in their lives, whether it's through food, or mental health services, or homelessness, or whatever it looks like. As of now, we are in the final couple of weeks of our Christmas kettles, so hint, hint, if you would like to man a kettle, call our office. We would love to have you on our kettles. Thank you. We are very thankful for many who volunteer their time throughout the year to make our ministries meaningful. Without them, we could not do it, and we thank the partnership of this group and our church, and all the churches in the city who've come together to help others. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation we'll present to you, and we'll have council come together for the photo.
Thank you, Counselor Keenan, and through you, Mayor Brown. This is about the Philippines-Canada Friendship Day. Whereas bilateral relations between the Philippines and Canada were established in December 1949, when Canada established a trade mission in Manila. Since then, the Philippines has established an embassy in Ottawa in 1971, and three Philippine consulates in Vancouver, 1956, Toronto, 1978, special year for me, and most recently in Calgary, 2016. Canada likewise upgraded this consulate operations in Manila to an embassy in 1972 with an honorary consulate in Cebu. Today, it is one of the largest Canadian embassies in the world. This year in December marks the 75th anniversary of the bilateral relations between the two countries. The 75th anniversary with the theme "Building Bridges, Celebrating Connections" encapsulates the dynamic and forward-looking diplomatic relations between the two countries. The Philippine consulate general in Toronto, who are represented here today, in partnership with the city government of Brampton, and the Filipino community in Brampton intends to hold the lighting of the Brampton City Hall clock tower in the colors of the Philippine flag, followed by the community Christmas party event on the 1st of December, and it was a lot of fun. Thank you to all who attended. These activities are expected to raise awareness about the significant developments in the Philippines-Canada relations, especially those involving and impacting the city of Brampton, and to further build on the robust people-to-people ties, with a view to opening new pathways for collaboration in various fields and sectors. Therefore, I, Mary Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2024, as Philippines-Canada Friendship Day in the city of Brampton. Thank you so much, Mayor Brown. And just very quickly, I know the consulate generals here, if they wish to share a few words as well, and we will take a photo. As a Filipino first elected here in the city of Brampton, I have seen our community grow significantly. It's one of the fastest-growing communities here in the region of Peal, and our celebration to celebrate 75-year friendship with the Philippines was a very special one. It was amazing to have the consulate general there to celebrate it, and I had my trip to the Philippines, talking about building bridges with the Philippines and our economic development and business relations. It was a successful trip that ended up bringing a delegation from the Philippines to Brampton as a follow-up. They didn't go to Toronto, they came to Brampton, and I'm very pleased about that. Thank you consulate general's office for coming today. And the floor, I guess Mayor Brown through you, if you would like to share a few words.
His worship, Mayor Patrick Brown, the regional and city councillors, Deputy Mayor Harcourt Singh. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. It is my distinct honor to receive today, before this august body, the proclamation of December 1st as Philippines-Canada Friendship Day. On behalf of Consulate General Angelica Escalona and the 21,000 Filipinos who call Brampton home, I wish to convey our deep appreciation for this act. This shows how close the ties between our peoples are, and how much value the city and people of Brampton place on Filipinos and Filipino Canadians in this wonderful place. The Philippine consulate general in Toronto expresses its eagerness to work with stakeholders in Brampton and the Philippines in pursuing opportunities for collaboration in various fields and sectors. We welcome the proclamation as an opportunity to better engage the Filipino community and to open doors for greater economic cooperation, particularly in priority sectors for both Brampton and the Philippines, such as advanced manufacturing, food and beverage, health and life sciences, and innovation and technology. I once again thank Mayor Brown, MP Shafkat Ali, and Regional Counselor Ruena Santos for gracing our lighting ceremony of the City Hall clock tower on December 1st. The coldness of the Canadian winter is easily overcome by the warmth of the Canadian community working together. We look forward to every 1st of December in the years ahead to celebrate with the government of the city of Brampton and the Filipino community in Brampton this enduring and growing friendship between our countries and peoples. Thank you, and mabuhay.
Mabuhay. And Consulate General, I'd just say, welcome to the home of Jose Rizal Park, and welcome to the home of the best hallow-hallow party in Canada, the city of Brampton. We will present this proclamation to you, and an honor to have you here. I do know Deputy Mayor Singh wanted to say a word as well.
Thank you, and I just want to say personally, thank you, Counselor Santos. Thank you, Consulate General, for coming here. From a personal standpoint, as Counselor Santos, I have actually a deep personal connection with the Philippines myself. Significant amount of my family is still there and have migrated there. They speak fluent Telugu, I believe it is. Tagalo, sorry, Tagalo. And they speak fluently, and many grandchildren that are mixed, and it's a beautiful thing, and so it adds a deep connection to me and my family. Many of them are here too now, and they don't speak English, they speak Tagalog and Pajami. So it's very interesting connection, and it's been a great, wonderful place for my family, and was very helpful at a difficult time. So thank you, and very proud to support this.
Okay, members of council, could join me as we present this proclamation to the consulate? Okay, this takes us to our next announcement, which is for the Sarbat Dabala Gurbur Radiothon. The sponsor for this is Deputy Mayor Harcourt Singh. We're going to have Jagdish Graywell speak to this, but I think there are other representatives that are here as well. But what an extraordinary radiothon for also getting our second hospital built, blown away by how this has grown, only in its second year to be such a magnificent event. Deputy Mayor, if you want to introduce the delegation here today.
Sure. If I may, Counselor Plushy has said he's starstruck, and we do have a lot of the core South Asian media here today. 13:50 a.m., it's listened to by many residents to get a lot of their community news here. A lot of giants in the room today, and who decided a couple of years ago to use their efforts for a great cause, which is for William Osler, and to help fundraise for the hospital, which I know, Mayor, is very important to you as well, and so glad to see the community, the local media step up, and I'll pass it on to Jagdish Graywell to say a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Brown, Deputy Mayor Harjut, and the members of the councils. We want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible success of this year's radiothon. It was held on November 6th from 4:00 a.m. in the morning to 9:00 p.m. in support of William Ossler Health System. We took the pledges of about $104,000, and so far, we have collected $85,000, which is a huge success. This remarkable achievement wouldn't have been possible without the dedications of our team member and the tremendous support from our community. I would like Harjinder to read the names of all the radio hosts who participated in this radiothon.
Thank you, Jagdish, and thank you, Mayor, and all the council members. I would like to acknowledge all our producers and other sponsors, especially, we will start with Harjit Janjwa from Sanja Vira. He do his radio show from 4:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. every day. And then Shambi Parthol from Sajdri Swayar, Kulvinder Singh Sheena from South Asian Voice, Jagdish Gharwal from Radio Khavasar, Dalbir Kathuriya and team, Radio Sabrang, Jaswant Vasil, Jaswant Vasil Show, Sukdev Thapur and Rajvir Kaur from Radio Hakikat, Amarjeet Rai, Ekam Radio, Harjinder Gill, The Harjinder Gill Show, Sodhi Nagra, Radio Udeek, and then Radio Hum Safer, Jaswir Singh Sandhu, Gurpri Imaan, Radio Sursas, Tanveer Kaur, Radio Tanveer, Itwan Singh, Channel Radio, Arun, Dev Gaana, Gurjiman Singh, Sandali Paud, and Asma Saleem from Asma Saleem Show. We would like to thank all of our producers.
A heartfelt thankful thank to the William Ossler Health System Foundation CEO Ken Mayhew and Board Chair Pardeep Gill and their whole team and the city of Brampton for standing by us every step of the way. We also want to acknowledge the incredible effort of Kodip Goli, Prabjit Kant, Ishat Tripathi, Harbinder Berg, Chawani, and our other members who supported us during this radiothon. Lastly, thank you to all our listeners and donors who contributed so generously. Together, we are building a healthier and stronger community. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the city, I just want to say thank you for stepping up. There's one thing we hear again and again, is we need the second hospital. I'd say yesterday, but really 15 years ago, so a lot of yesterdays before, and it's because of this generosity, we're finally gonna see construction of the hospital, the long-waited second hospital, in March or April, and so it's gonna be a special day. I hope you're gonna be there with us when we see that first sod turning. But I think it'd be appropriate, since we have Ken Mayhew here from the hospital, maybe, Ken, if you could express your thanks, or Pardeep, the Chair of the Board, if you come up together to express your thanks to this incredible effort from some pretty incredible radio personalities in our community.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brown and council, and absolutely, I'm honored to do so together, as you heard, with Pardeep Singh Gill, who is the Chair of Osler. I would say, without exaggeration, my name is Ken Mayhew. I'm President and CEO of the William Ossler Health System Foundation, and on behalf of the 10,000 nurses, physicians, staff, and volunteer leaders of the organization, as Mayor Brown said, this is an extraordinary accomplishment. I think about Radio Hum Safer 1350, the city of Brampton, coming together for the second annual, and obviously also think about it as Gurprab, so it's in the spirit of Gur Nanak Dugji's teachings of compassion, selfless service, and generosity. As we mentioned, and as I'll add, it's one thing to think about it, it's another thing to actually do it. It's a huge effort, and we're very grateful for everyone who put together their passion, their time. People are busy, as we heard earlier today, there's lots of worthy causes, but the cause that's central to all of us in our lives is healthcare. I'd like to specifically thank some of the enormous number of donors who are involved and leaders, specifically Jagdish Gharwal, Kulvinder Tina, Harjinder Gill, and from the city of Brampton, Kodip Goli, Prabjit Kant, and Asha Tripathi. The Save For Osler radiothon, as you heard, and I just got this updated this morning, because I know we literally were collecting funds last night, is over $85,000 and counting, and that's a huge accomplishment, as Mayor Brown said and knows very well. The second hospital is urgently needed by the city of Brampton, and that will take more than good wishes, it will take funds. Many of you heard me say that hospitals are built by communities for communities, and this gift is not just a contribution to a building, it's a contribution to the future of all Brampton residents. I thought I'd digress for a moment. I believe sometimes history repeats itself, and next month, not someday, but next month, it will be 100 years since a group of similar volunteers got together and decided to raise funds for the first Peel Memorial Hospital, 1925. That group set a very bold, audacious fundraising target of $2,000. Our goal is slightly higher this time, but they had this same sort of passion and commitment and belief that someone has to step forward to get it done, and when those people did that, others followed. So on behalf of literally the generations who will benefit from your kindness and your leadership, thank you once again. It's an enormous accomplishment for Osler and for the city of Brampton. Thank you.
Well, if I could ask members of council to join me at the front, I think we have a check presentation we'll make to the hospital. It's something very special, being on the precipice of 100-year anniversary and seeing this hospital built on that anniversary. Okay, for those who, if you, those who want to leave the room, feel free to do so if your announcement is complete, but our next announcement is equally impressive. It's a feat of personal, incredible personal accomplishment, and Counselor Baur has held this discussion item to talk about an Ironman completed by one of our residents who is 64-years-old and only learned how to swim two years ago. Had a chance to meet this individual with Deputy Mayor Singh and Counselor Tor yesterday, and the story is inspiring. So Counselor Baur, could you please introduce this special recognition?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So Ironman is Harjit Singh, also known as Harry, completed Ironman triathlon held on Sacramento, California on October 27th, 2024. He's the first Indo-Canadian of 64-years-of-age to complete this Ironman triathlon in 16 hours 43 minutes, which consisted of 3.9-kilometer swim, 180.2-kilometers bicycle ride, and again, he just learned swimming two years ago. And he also had a run, which was 42.2 kilometers, so it's widely considered one of the most difficult one-day sporting events in the world, and I do want to give the floor to Harjit Singh and his colleagues to say a few words. So congratulations, very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you, respected Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and all councillor. You give me honor for this achievement, thank you very much.
And a very humble individual. I would note, when we had the meeting yesterday, Counselor Tor and the Deputy Mayor offered to join you on the next Ironman if they could drive next to you. And so, numbers are growing, but I believe the Deputy Mayor wanted to say a word of admiration as well.
Sure. I just wanted to add, actually, one interesting fact. Two years ago, when he started learning swimming, it was at Gore Meadows, so shout-outs to the community services team, community services are being well in use, well-used, and you'll have free membership after 65 as well. So I just want to throw that in there. Yeah, and if we could take a picture, that'd be nice.
This completes our announcements. Public delegations. Our first public delegation is from Amanda Corbett, Bolton resident, in regards to items 18.14 for the zoning bylaw 1942024. Do we have Amanda here?
Yes. Good morning, my name is Amanda Corbett. That's a tough act to follow, but I'll try. Good morning, through the mayor, to council and staff and the public. I'm here to delegate against item 1814 on the agenda for 10120 Highway 50. Next slide, please. I do have concerns regarding approving the zoning bylaw today. My main first concern is regarding the holding provisions are not included in that bylaw. In the staff report from the November 4th planning meeting, there was a request for holding provision to be there for an updated functioning service report, an updated grading plan, and TRCA clearance. In checking the documents online, I didn't see any updated documents or clearance from TRCA, and the zoning bylaw did not have any holding provisions on it. I did have a question whether the recommended conditions for removing the holding provisions had been addressed. Next slide, please. Regarding the site plan application, there was an entry in the staff report from the November 4th meeting indicating that the applicant would be required to receive site plan approval at a later time prior to trucks being stored on the premises, and I did not see any of that documentation on the Bram plan online, and I wasn't sure whether that was required before trucks can use the property. Next slide, please. I was attempting to show a video, however, the video was too large to send via email. This video shows what it's like on a morning commute, driving south on Highway 50 in the area of Major Mackenzie, which is just north of this particular property. If the video would play, you would see various incredibly unsafe turning actions by several cars, turning left in front of transport trucks and making very unsafe U-turns. That is a frequent and regular occurrence on this particular stretch of road, and this provides context for my next slide, please. The current state of traffic in this location is incredibly dangerous. In the truck movements plan in the documents online, it seems that trucks would need to veer into more than two lanes of southbound traffic in order to turn right into or out of this property. Given the current state of traffic, it really doesn't appear that this is safe, as you would have seen from the previous slide. I'm not sure if that's what's intended. There's also no mention of turning left into or out of the property, and I wasn't sure if that was being restricted. And lastly, was there any study done of how this property will impact the significant amount of traffic on Highway 50? Next slide, please. In short, the zoning bylaw should not be approved today. Holding provisions are not included, and the staff had recommended them. Site plan approval likely is required prior to trucks being stored on the property. The existing truck movements plan documents show what appear to be very unsafe turning movements onto Highway 50. An appropriate traffic study should be done to determine the impact of trucks moving in and out of that property on the already dangerous and overburdened Highway 50. Last slide. In brief, we're requesting that it not be approved today. The traffic on Highway 50 is already overburdened and very unsafe. Allowing a further driveway to have trucks turning in and out, blocking more than two lanes of southbound traffic is not safe. We all must work together to protect our community that drives on Highway 50. Please do the right thing today and don't approve this zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have motioned to receive the delegation from Counselor Singh, seconded by Counselor Paro. Although in favor, delegation is received. Our next delegation is from Paya Meta, Brampton resident, item 13.1, staff report, application to amend the official plan of zoning bylaw in regards to McLaughlin Road, Ward 6. Do we have Pail here?
Yes, hi.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Awesome. Good morning, everyone. This is Paya Meta, resident of 110 Merrycroft Port. Although this new construction is gonna be a commercial or residential, we still don't know, but our front entrance is going to be facing the storm water and management and electric transformers, which is right adjacent to our property, and it concerns us a lot. Our entrance literally would be facing it. Although I'm aware the city of Brampton and everyone in power will make a thorough decision and will assess the site plan, as a resident of 110 Merrycroft, it is still very concerning that we have this right in front of our entrance. Noise is also a concern because of that. Another concern that we have that all our backyards, the Merrycroft Port, all of our backyards, will be facing this new construction of a 10-floor building, 10 or 12-floor building, and I understand housing is a concern, but because of it being so close to our neighborhood, privacy is concerning for all of us, and the fact that the residents of this new constructions can throw something right into our backyard. I have a daughter who is going to be a toddler soon, but how do I even let her out in our backyard when I know that there is always a security and privacy concern, especially during the summer months? As you all must know, we Merrycroft residents already face so much of noise issues because of having two very busy plazas around us and being right on one of the busy intersections that is McLaughlin and Bovet, we already face a lot of noise from racing cars, helper cars passing through McLaughlin, and traffic during peak hours and weekends. On a weekend or peak hour, just to take a left into McLaughlin or left into Bovet takes a good eight to 10 minutes. All our Merrycroft residents are completely okay with a commercial building being made, maybe with a day maybe with a daycare, as we all know that there's such a long waitlist for daycares. I haven't received even one call for my daughter's enrollment for daycare. She is on a waitlist at 12 different daycare locations here around us. I hope my concerns are taken into consideration. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, I have a motion moved by councillor Palleshi, seconded by councillor Barrow, to receive the delegation from Ward 6. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to Government Relations Matters. That was held, I believe, by councillor Santos. Andrea Hoffman.
Good morning, members of council, and through the mayor, we have a brief presentation for you this morning, and I'll begin with regional updates. We can move to the next slide, please. This coming Thursday, we'll have a regional council hold its regular meeting as well, followed by continued budget deliberations at 12:00 p.m. We can move to the next slide, please. On a budget-related meeting, we have several items that have been deferred from the initial December 5th council meeting. Items were deferred to allow regional staff to provide an update and information related to budget process approvals, and item 6.1 on the agenda for this week includes an update from the chief administrative officer regarding the 2025 budget approvals. At the time of preparation of this presentation, details of that item have not been available yet. We can move to the next slide. Next, on the regular council meeting agenda, we wanted to flag for you item 11.1, homelessness overflow facilities and support contract extension. The staff report seeks council approval to proceed with extension of hotel and related support contracts to provide homeless individuals with emergency shelter and support when the regional shelters are at capacity. Peel shelters and overflow facilities are increasingly used beyond their intended purpose due to rising demand and lack of deeply affordable housing. With 520 shelter beds operating at full capacity and overflow accommodations costing an average of $141 per room per night, the system faces significant fiscal and operational strains. The report does include an indication from regional staff that if further federal funding is anticipated, however, that would not be sufficient to meet regional needs in this matter. Next slide, please. Next, we wanted to flag for you item 13.1, Regional Growth Forecast Update 2024. This report includes new regional and local municipal growth forecasts that reflect the municipal housing targets, which, should council approve, the growth forecast in this report would be used as input for developing the water and wastewater and transportation master plans, along with other growth management and fiscal analysis. Can move to the next slide, please. Next, we're flagging item 13.2, which provides supplementary information related to growth forecast information, including staff approach on developing regional scale master plans and infrastructure services. The report includes two scenarios, with scenario one, which is based on 2021 census data and forms base for infrastructure planning, which would include water, wastewater, transportation, master planning. Scenario two incorporates changes that were introduced through Bill 23, as well as housing targets, and it will be utilized as the upper limit of growth to understand the timing and ultimate infrastructure requirements and costs that should pace of growth in the region meet the municipal housing pledges. Scenario two was developed while Heritage Heights was in the mediation process and accurate population employment yield was not provided to the region at the time. Population and employment yields and the timing of the growth in Heritage Heights will be incorporated into next growth forecast update. City staff support the approach to utilize scenario one as the base scenario for master planning. This approach aligns with the findings of the recent peer review completed by Watson and Associates for the city of Brampton. City staff will continue to work with the regional staff on this matter. Next slide, please. The last slide we wanted to flag for you on the regional agenda is item 14.1, which is correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, which indicates the recent changes to Planning Act in order to accelerate the implementation of ARUs. At the time when the province put forward the proposed changes, the city of Brampton responded through a formal consultation process, including indicating that the city did not endorse many of the proposed changes. These changes are now in effect and include eliminating barriers, including maximum load coverage, angular plans, floor space index, minimum separation distances, and other changes. The city's ARU zoning permissions will be updated through the comprehensive zoning bylaw review to conform with the new regulations. Next slide, please. Moving on to provincial updates, the government of Ontario has introduced a new $1 billion in loans to provide municipalities with more financing options for water infrastructure projects that would enable construction of more housing. The new housing enabling water infrastructure lending stream under the Infrastructure Ontario Loan Program will support construction and expansion and rehabilitation of drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure projects that enable new homes and support housing. Infrastructure Ontario will begin accepting applications from municipalities on December 2nd, so that process has started. City staff are currently assessing the opportunities to this program and will undergo an exercise to understand program requirements and eligibility criteria. Next slide, please. Provincial government has also announced a change in leadership at Metrolinks. Mike and Linksey, the president and CEO of Infrastructure Ontario, is now the new interim president and chief executive officer of Metrolinks effective December 16. The current CEO and president, Phil Westler, informed the board of directors that he was accepted in a new position and will be leaving as of that date. Metrolinks Board of Directors will soon begin search for new parliament president and CEO. The government has also appointed Angela Clayton as the new interim president and CEO of Infrastructure Ontario effective December 5. Next slide, please. Moving on to federal updates, the federal government has announced a new $50 million short-term rental enforcement fund, which is intended to help municipalities ensure compliance with existing short-term rental regulations. The program will deliver funding to municipalities to increase enforcement and compliance activities, such as hiring enforcement staff, managing complaints, and conducting inspections. Applications for municipalities will open on December 16 and will accept applications until January 24, 2025. Staff are currently assessing the program for potential application to better understand eligibility criteria and potentially put together an application. Next slide, please. The last update we have for you speaks to the recent advocacy days by FCM. The city of Brampton was represented by the regional councillor, Anna Santos. The advocacy days focus on key recommendations by FCM in context of the upcoming 2025 budget was included, the new municipal growth framework, achieving housing affordability, ending chronic homelessness, enforcing infrastructure resilience, as well as ensuring public safety. Many of these recommendations are very much in line with city's ongoing advocacy efforts, and through such events such as the annual FCM conference or advocacy days, city of Brampton maintains a strong presence in ensuring that city's advocacy priorities are represented and included in FCM's work. And this concludes today's presentation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Andreas, and we have councillor Keenan.
Thank you, thank you, Andreas, and through you, Mr. Chair, a couple things. Sad to see the province is not taking any of the recommendations from the city of Brampton when it comes to the ARUs. Everything we've been doing on that file for the last two years kind of feels like kick us when we're down, right? So hopefully, they look to make some changes, or not changes, but at least give us tools to be able to work, because Brampton's different than any other municipality when it comes to ARUs, what's called what it is, basement apartments. So I'm very disappointed to see that that's finally now taking more of our power to control what's happening in these disgusting conditions. But my question originally is about the region. We are in budget, and we're, especially when it comes to public works items at the region, you know, certain councillors are looking to, you know, shelve certain items because of what might be uploaded and downloaded, and they're saying that we may hear something this week. Obviously, I'm with the mindset that we need to keep everything moving and that we can't hold up the progress of said budget for a political announcement that we don't actually know when it's coming, because we're supposed to not even have the region at this point. So if we wait on them, we could be waiting forever. So my question is, do we have any insight to anything coming this week from the province in anything relations to uploading or downloading of services from the region to the municipality?
Through the mayor, councillor, we don't have any confirmation of any announcement being scheduled. Everyone, as you indicated, is in a mode of waiting mode for provincial announcement, but that date has not been announced formally. And to your point, item 6.1 on the regional agenda is intended to provide council with an update in terms of approval processes and requirements to keep services going and budget processes moving forward. So staff are in constant contact with regional staff, with the provincial staff in terms of the upcoming announcement, but at this point, we weren't able to confirm anything.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Keenan. Councillor Santos?
Thank you so much. Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased about the short-term rental enforcement funding $50 million from the federal government, so hoping that we will be jumping on that ASAP, perhaps looking at how that might be able to fund extra bylaw officers and more enforcement to relieve the pressure on everything being focused on RRLs in particular, which segues into the whole issue of ARUs and the province now passing that legislation through to open the doors to different types of ARUs and decreasing setbacks. Like councillor Keenan said, we've been trying to, through the RRL pilot program, which has been a success, deal with some of the negative consequences of such an influx of such development in existing neighborhoods. It was shown to me this morning that the federal government is hopping on the bandwagon on this as well. So as of yesterday, and I don't know, Andreas, if the GR team has seen this yet, the federal government has also announced that they are creating financial incentives and remortgaging and refinancing options for homeowners to renovate their homes and accommodate secondary units. So they've increased their special loans for secondary units to $80,000 per household, and also opened the doors to the ability now with even lower interest rates. We probably know what the new interest rate is now. I know the announcement is at 945. Lower interest rates for people now to refinance their homes to include secondary units with loans of up to $80,000. That matched with what the provincial government is doing, as you can imagine, is going to create more incentive for the flipping of houses within existing neighborhoods and conversion of ARUs and rental units. So thank God, Brampton has a safety net to deal with some landlords who are clearly going to exploit even more so these opportunities. However, we do not have the pilot program covered in all wards. And so, in wards 1, 3, 4, 5, and 7, there are enough incentives through the pilot program to deter folks from exploiting the situation with respect to ARUs. However, in some of the other wards, guess where all the development of ARUs is going to go, and rental units is now going to go. It will go into those areas that do not have those disincentives or tighter regulation in order to control the negative consequences of added garbage collection, garbage overflowing, cars in the driveways, weeds growing, grass overgrowing, all the issues and symptoms of the problem that our bylaw enforcement team is dealing with. So because of all these pieces coming into play, I strongly encourage all of my colleagues to really take seriously having the RRL across the entire city. Perhaps people don't understand yet what RRL stands for, but when you say to them, and we're going to have a meeting regarding communication to the residents on this, when you say to them, "Are you okay with your neighbor that has overflowing garbage and piles of garbage in their backyard? Are you okay with so many cars in the driveways and overflowing on the street? Are you okay with issues related to noise because there are too many people living in a house? Are you okay with no fire alarms, no smoke detectors, and people with no fire exits living in basement apartments?" They will say, "No, we are not okay with that." Therefore, are you in support of the RRL? Because that's what this program is intended to deal with in a very proactive way. So I think that we need to send communication, again, and I don't know, Andreas, if we have sent enough communication, to the federal provincial government emphasizing what we are doing here in Brampton in order to maintain safe additional residential rental units. And I do think we're going to talk about the occupancy limits later. We might have to include some of that latest information regarding occupancy limits as well, and keep the government updated on what Brampton is doing, because similar to the short-term rental funding that the federal government is now giving $50 million to, I guarantee you municipalities will also be asking for similar funding to support the enforcement of additional residential units. Brampton is leading the charge on this, and so if we could be proactive and update our federal and provincial ministers, as well as local MPs, of what we are doing, that would be great. And I know that we're constantly looking at the cost of it as well. So if we're going to have to deal with more of these and more of the consequences of some of these units coming in, then certainly they need to give us some funding for it too. So that's the first one. The other one I wanted to bring up, so at FCM, I had a meeting, so this year at FCM, we didn't just focus on the government ministers and the government MPs. This year or last week at FCM, we made a strategic decision to start talking to conservative MPs. And one of the conservative MPs that I sat down with is from Ontario, it's MP Alex Ruff from Bruce Gray Owen Sound, very conservative guy. We were talking to him about the municipal growth framework and opportunities for cities to actually get our fair share of funding when it comes to growth and when it comes to infrastructure, because we know budget is happening now, we cannot pay for everything on property taxes, and it's unsustainable and unfair for us to beg and plead and wait to see whether or not we're going to get funding in order to put shovels in the ground in our municipality. He brought up a really good point. He said, "Councillor Santos, I used to work in construction. I could build a bridge and repair a bridge in my rural community for $5,000 and do it overnight." I said, "Okay, that's really ambitious of you." And then he said, "But why does it take a city like years to repair that bridge and millions of dollars?" And we had an ongoing discussion about it, and he started bringing up issues related to procurement and why there is so much time in procurement to actually approve something to be constructed and what the delays are in procurement. He also brought up the construction delays, and if construction companies are delaying and delaying and delaying, what are the consequences of that? Because time is money. The more you delay a project, whether that's through procurement process or through construction delays, the more money it's going to cost in the future. We all see that. So this is just a question to staff, because he brought up a really good point, and if they are indeed the government in waiting, we will be dealing with them shortly, and I would love to get back to them to show them how Brampton, again, is being fantastic at dealing with some of these things. So a question through the chair to perhaps... So question through the chair to perhaps the CEO, are we looking at ways to better streamline our procurement process? Like, for example, the bare minimum legislation that's required in order to approve things and projects moving forward? And with respect to the construction issues and costs related to delays, are we looking at ways to penalize unnecessary delays that perhaps some of these companies can't justify?
Through the chair to councillor Santos, two questions. First, in terms of construction and timing, we have moved to a more streamlined process through our budget process as well in terms of big projects, large projects. We're now asking upfront now for design money and construction money at the same time, because everybody knows it takes about at least two years to complete a design. So your, your cost for construction is gonna be, it's gonna be off in two years, just based on inflation. So design is done first, it's costed out, and then we're gonna get, request the construction based on that cost. So our budget are gonna be more in line with what's current in terms of inflation for that year of construction. The tender that we put out, in order to penalize a contractor, schedules are always requested as part of our tender package, and we try to maintain that schedule, allowing for whether delays strikes unforeseen situations. But in order to penalize a contractor who is delaying outside of those elements, outside of his control, we also have to have, to make it fair, we also have to have a system where if they're gonna be penalized for being late, are they gonna be incentivized for being ahead of schedule? So that's one thing we're also looking at through legal as well.
That's great. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the CEO, are there more opportunities for us, particularly within the procurement process, to look at tightening or reducing the amount of paperwork, bureaucracy, admin stuff, and back and forth here and there, like in that process to like save time and streamline things a little bit more as well?
Through the chair to councillor Santos, that's a good question. Currently, we're looking at reviewing and revising our procurement bylaw. And that will have means to how we can accomplish this, and I expect to have that new procurement bylaw in Q1 of 2025.
Awesome. So there is a report that's coming back?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. I was gonna ask for a report back, but it's coming back. Thank you very much. I do not have any further questions. Thanks, Andres.
Thank you.
We have a motion to receive the presentation from councillor Santos.
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the board. Councillor Tor.
Okay, we don't have you on the board. Councillor Tor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies, just because I'm online, I didn't have the panel. Just wanted to say thanks, Andres, for that. A lot of comments about housing announcements. I actually personally think that, you know, the federal government and the provincial government today have come up with very progressive policies that we desperately need to capture the housing shortage that we have, you know, with the problems talking about the ARUs and the regulations rendered, and now with the federal government, but there are incentives that are coming there for ARUs. If you remember, Mr. Mayor, a couple of weeks ago, we did a business visit to one of the businesses in the city that's building modular homes, and they're building garden suites as well, and they employ at least 50% of the workforce that are women in skilled trades in construction. You know, when we asked them what's their biggest challenge in people adopting ARUs, the biggest challenge happened to be financing. And they're working with financial institutions, with banks, to try and get good financing deals and options, but none of those would be able to complete with the new announcement that the federal government has made, $80,000, 2% interest for 15 years. I think that's the kind of bold action that's gonna need it for more adoption of ARUs. It means more grandparents will be able to stay home, more in-laws could, you know, stay with their children as well. It means that, you know, kids that go to university, when they come back and they wanna live in their hometown, they'll have a space for them to live in as well. So I actually think it's a really good program, and I look forward to seeing how, you know, cities and communities react to it and what kind of policies do they adopt to ensure that we can actually meet the housing shortage. Absolutely, we need more money for our infrastructure. I think that advocacy is very important, but at the same time, I think, you know, our population is not decreasing anytime in the future. We've gotta make sure that we have all kinds of housing options that are available to people. So I'm very excited about the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tor. We have a motion to receive the government relations report moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Plessy. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
This takes us to our next item, which is 10.21, or we dealt with?
10.21.
10.2.1 was held by councillor Santos.
Thanks so much through you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for staff on the report. On page four of eight, I think it is, there's a chart on there that shows, if the clerk wants to bring it up, that shows the different fees and fines, and I had a hard, I couldn't interpret it properly, so just wondering if staff can clarify what that is. And then my next question is in regards to the report towards the end. There's a, there's mention of, and I like the fact that, based on the report, there is a path forward to set occupancy limits based on the number of rooms and the size of the rooms, et cetera, in the, in the ARUs. But at the last part of the report, it also talks about a bit of a loophole regarding single-family homes, and just wondering if staff can comment on how we may be able to approach that particular issue. So just clarification on the chart and then the second question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor, yes, the chart that is up on the screen, that just refers to recommendation number three, that the city, city council approved the proposed amendments to the administrative penalty for repeat offenders. So basically what that's showing is under the current column, for the year of 2023, we issued various different penalty notices for the amounts of $100, $250, $400, and $500, which gave us a total fines issued of $397,950. If we were to adopt the graduated penalties as proposed, 2023 actually would have looked like the proposed box on the right. And then it breaks down that initial 428 into first offense, second offense, and subsequent offense, and then it gives the different amounts that would have been applied. So for the same number of penalty notices issued, it would have changed the total fines from the $397,000 to approximately $675,000. And in the process, it would also have been an increased deterrent for everyone that's underneath the second and subsequent offense.
Okay.
And then, sorry, just to clarify also, is that will, that proposal will apply to all property standards offenses, not just the occupancy ones. So we'll be proactive in all of them.
Okay, great. Now I understand the chart. And then the, if the clerk can go down to page six of eight, to the particular paragraph that I was referring to, next steps and further considerations. That's it. One more page down. No, actually, sorry, back to six of eight. Anyway, Rob, you know what, which one I'm referring to, it says, I can't see here. Anyway, you know what I'm talking about.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor. Yes, I do know what you're talking about. We have a number of different measures to address rental properties. One of the areas that is not currently specifically addressed is when there's a single, or when there's a group living unit in a single dwelling residence. So five people decide to all live in one residence. That isn't specifically addressed. What I would like to note, however, is that all properties, regardless of whether they're rental or just family dwellings, fall underneath the community standards expectations, which drive the large number of our complaints, being parking, overgrown grass, and refuse. So although they're not specifically being captured, the symptoms that we most commonly get complaints from residents are being captured. With that being said, how will we move forward? Recommendation number six is that staff be directed to review council, the council-approved second unit task force, and report back with recommendations to enhance its effectiveness in addressing evolving trends and improving service delivery, including identifying optimal staffing levels. Over the years, council and staff have attempted to address the rental situation, the property concerns, and that has developed into multiple task forces that have overlapping mandates, and as we just discussed, also have some gaps in the mandate. What we're going to leverage with that is we're going to report back, we're going to have an upcoming RRL task force meeting in January. In that meeting, we're going to launch the efforts of the, or we're gonna discuss the launch of the efforts, we're going to review RRL progress thus far, we're going to map out how we see the final year of the pilot, or the current final year of the pilot, what are our expectations. We're going to unroll or review the newly rolled out metrics that we're able to capture with the recent additions to our staff, so that you'll know what we can capture and will be capturing in this upcoming year. And we will use those metrics to then guide what we see our organization structure being post this final year. So we'll look at how does the RRL play into the ARU? How do we look at the situation that you've mentioned? Is technically a gap? We need to put a better scope on how much of a gap that is. So while it does exist, yes, but we need to know, is it something that we hit with a hammer, or is it something that we address through a more subtle technique? And we now have the ability to capture those metrics so that we can make informed decisions on those. So that will start with that RRL task force meeting in January, and then we'll build it out from there.
Great. And just one, one final question. So it looks like with the new fines that we are proposing and have approved, there is gonna be more cost recovery. However, the, I guess my next question, maybe we can make sure that it is included in the next report to council or discuss the task force. Are we recouping all of the costs associated with the enforcement and implementation of this program? Bring it up again, because as mentioned in the GR report, the short-term rental enforcement, the province is giving $50 million of funding for municipalities to apply, and I think that we should be advocating for a similar thing, given both the federal and provincial government are pushing for more ARUs and rental units in existing communities. So how, how can, how do we, are we recovering all that cost? And can we make sure to track it and report it to the next update?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just one nuance that I would like to highlight is that when it comes to cost recovery, we use fees for cost recovery and we use penalties to drive compliance. So we, in regards to the cost recovery, we do have a fee structure, and recommendation number five is also that we will report back to city council with an amending bylaw to establish new user fees related to non-compliance and repeat re-inspections, similar to what has been rolled out in other areas. Essentially, the properties that are taking up the most of our time will be the ones that will then fall under the user fees, which will most likely be in a format of the reinspection is what's going to start to cost you more money, because we're having to come back out again.
Okay. And so then my final request is because I don't want, this is another example of a downloading to municipalities, okay? And we're constantly downloaded, and again, we're paying for a lot of this stuff on property taxes. So I would hate to send a signal out there to the province and the federal government that we are recovering all of the costs, whether that's on the property tax dime or through various admin fees or what have, or what have you, particularly with the licensing, because we want people to get a license if they're a landlord, but we don't want those fees to be so exuberant that they're not gonna get a license. But if we have to recover our costs on our own, then yeah, we have to charge those high license fees. So can we show, you know, when we come up with those costs, I'd love to see the comparison of what the baseline was prior to the RRL and the initiation of this new legislation to encourage more ARUs, and what the cost is to the municipality after, so that we can demonstrate that there has been an added, downloaded cost to municipalities to deal with this, and therefore you should fund us for this. Does that work? Awesome.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I would just like to highlight councillor two, again, we've been provided with an analyst. The analyst will be present at that RRL task force, and that's what we're looking for, is for that input, for what do we wanna capture, and so that we make sure we meet those expectations of what data you're looking for.
Yes, and in addition to that, because I forgot to mention this earlier, while we were talking about it earlier, I would love, and this is a little bit separate, I would love for staff to also, maybe this is a planning or public works thing, to look at the added infrastructure costs and community service-related costs for some of these ARUs, because we're getting a lot of data now of what's going on in existing neighborhoods with ARUs and rental units, what the incremental costs to water, wastewater, road, infrastructure, fire, police, community centers, you name it. All of those costs that are gonna increase that we are not going to get through development charges, because there are gonna be more people living in these neighborhoods that originally were not planned for to live in those existing neighborhoods. Just question to staff on that.
Through the chair, through to councillor Santos, what I will suggest is we'll take that as direction and work with enforcement to bring that part, to bring that back as part of the January workshop.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question was more related around the growth plan, the down, the province indicating to us through the region what we have to grow to. And then how many people, when we go, when we project our growth, how many people do we still estimate how many live per unit? That was a number, it was a very low number before. I don't know if that ever changed, and so I kinda wonder, should that number change? But if you can answer the original question, Commissioner.
Through the chair, through to you councillor Plessy, you're quite right, the growth plan does mandate that municipalities come up with a persons-per-unit calculation. Based on the 2024 DC background study that was brought forward to council, Brampton is at 3.41 PPU across all housing types. It's one of the highest in Canada. I don't have historical data, but that's certainly something we can endeavor to bring back in January as part of this report to show how it's changed over the years. And I would guess that that 3.14 is probably a bit of an undercount, just given what we're seeing on the ground.
It is extremely low.
And council will recall, it was almost a year ago this time when we asked Dr. Mike Moffett to come and do a special council meeting to speak to that undercount and the influx that Brampton is experiencing with international students and whatnot. So certainly we can pull that data together and perhaps work with Dr. Moffett to bring some of that more accuracy in January.
And I think that would help us in terms of in-
And I think that would help us in terms of any kind of advocate work or anything. And you're saying that we're, that's the highest amongst other municipalities in Canada, that 3.1.
Through the chair, through to you, Counselor Plessy, yes, that's one of the highest in Canada.
Right, and it's, and it's too low for us. We know right off the top, it's too low. And that needs, so that, that's what needs to be adjusted. And then, you know, then we can potentially use a lot of what we're talking about with, going back to the province, to say that, you know, you, we need to grow to this. This is what you're saying that we are, but these are the number of units. This is the true number or a more reflective number of the municipalities. So, you know, you look at this table alone, Counselor Keen's got 10 kids, like it's pretty much. Counselor Singh is working towards a whole cricket team, like it's, it's going, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, congratulations to Counselor Singh on the pending news. And next up is Counselor Tor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question here. My general understanding was that we had something in terms of our occupancy standards about four people that are unrelated that have to live in a housing unit. Like how does that, like is that still the case? And how does that change with the new changes that have been proposed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe that's the case, but I will lean on our project manager, Allison Santos, to speak to.
So through the chair, there is no current occupancy standard that speaks to a limit or a cap for bedrooms. Under the current property standards bylaw, under the occupancy standards section, it does prohibit the conversion of any room into a bedroom without a building permit and does have a minimum floor area requirement of seven square meters. What's being proposed in the staff report is increasing that safety standard where there is more than two occupants in that bedroom. So instead of setting a bedroom cap arbitrarily to apply to all bedroom sizes, the, I guess, scaled minimum floor area requirements increase based on the increase of occupancy. So where there's three people, that seven square meters would then increase to 14 square meters for the total bedroom size. And where there's more than three occupants, there would be a per-person floor area requirement of seven square meters per person, which does not currently exist in either the RRL or property standards bylaws.
It is, or my question is more towards occupancy for an entire housing unit? Like in one house, not according to bedrooms, but in one house?
So under municipal bylaws, it doesn't exist today, which is likely unlike the building code or fire code. What you may be referring to, though, is the definition of a lodging house under the zoning bylaw that does say where there's more than four persons being rented to individually. Under the Planning Act and the Municipal Act, it actually prohibits a municipality from distinguishing between people who are unrelated and related. So that language definitely doesn't exist, but maybe that number for four occupants is coming from the zoning bylaw definition of a lodging house.
That's one of the very, thank you for clarifying that. So in addition to like existing fire code, like, do we not have provisions that are existing like under your fire code or building code to deal with this as an issue? Apart from like the changes we're proposing here?
Through the mayor to Counselor Tor, we do have Chantel Cosgrove, our chief fire official online. She could weigh in on that.
No other questions?
Through the mayor, she'll, she'll work her way over if she's just in the adjacent room.
She say that again?
Through the mayor, Chantel is in the building. She's just in an adjacent room, so she can come and answer that question. How long will, so I think maybe, Counselor Tor, can we, we'll put you back on the board once we have the, once you have Chantel in the room? But is it, we'll go to Deputy Mayor for now? Unless you had additional questions for other staff?
No, that would be my last question. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Singh.
I think that works because mine's complimentary to sort of where Counselor Tor is going. Just a couple of questions. So I don't think it's your fault that we're assuming four. It was before you got here, there was, it was said, it was said, I remember this clearly. And I'm not going to name previous staff or nothing, but you could only have three unrelated, and then we changed it to four. And then we talked as well, and when you looked it up, it wasn't so clear cut. I remember talking to you, and that's where I think Counselor Tor is coming from as well. So maybe that clarity is helpful moving forward, and so we're all on the same page. My only concern is when we say three persons, and what about if it's a mother with two infants, right? Are the infants considered persons? And what about if it's a mother with four infants? And I just want to be careful in the language we use. So it's persons, adults, or does it include children as well?
Through the chair. So at this point, there is no distinction between child and adult.
Okay.
There would obviously be an expectation of discretion depending on the various scenarios that are there. But that's the guideline that's being put forward.
Just, my fear is the way the bylaw is written. It's, maybe if we're comfortable, I would like to distinguish persons as adults because I don't want to be in those type of situations. Secondly, I would ask that related, so we talked about related, unrelated, that's not distinguished anywhere. But we have used that language in the past, you're well aware, right? I think that's part of the confusion as well. And my last question is enforceability. How are you able to prove three people are living in a room together? Like how would that work?
Through the chair. It is also recognized in the report. Although the, this is being put forward as an enforcement method for occupancy, it is recognized that it will need an investigation in order to substantiate that, and it will be a complex investigation. We'll need to establish who's actually residing in that room. It's, to answer your question, you're right. It's going to require an investigation, and we'll need disclosure from the residents as to where they are occupying.
And so say the tenants of the room are complying. What would be your next step for the investigation? They're saying we don't want to be interviewed. Would you call the police at that standpoint? Would you go to the courts? Like how would that work? What's the escalation, I guess, of that?
So at this, through the chair, the, really our, our evidence that we would be able to obtain is just what is available to us. So if they're not complying or not cooperating, we'd be required to then seek if we could get that information from the property owner or seek from other demonstrated evidence. But to your point, we would, it requires an investigation and a level of compliance.
Okay, so even, thank you for your answers. From your answers, I am uncomfortable to move forward with this bylaw, so I would ask for this to be voted on separate. I think when we get into investigations and bylaw doing that, I'm very uncomfortable with that direction. And I'm very uncomfortable with the children not being distinguished. And that's not, I just appreciate you doing the work and bringing it forward. It's ultimately up to us to make the decision. But I would ask for this portion, this bylaw to be voted separately. I support the spirit of it, but it's not in our mandate. I think we're getting too policing, and I can't support that. Thank you. Sorry to use that word to a former police officer, but yeah, I can't support getting into that.
Counselor Tor, I believe we have Chantel here to answer your question.
Thank you.
Through the chair, sorry, I ran from another room. I, for the fire code, it doesn't, anything that is existing is where the fire code takes over from the building code. And the fire code doesn't speak to occupant load specific to a bedroom. So we can't, we can't enforce it through fire code in the same sense as a bylaw. I think that's one of the reasons why we were going through the bylaw to do it, but we can't enforce it through fire code as occupant load. So we have to look at it as a different, like through fire separations, through fire doors, through exits, and that's how we cover the fire code.
Okay, thank you for that answer, Mr. Mayor. Just in order to Deputy Mayor Singh's points, he brought up that electric motion about enforcement as well. And I agree with him as well. I also hope that this report came to committee, not the council. Would give us more time to consider this, debate this, discuss this, figure it out before we're moving forward. So I don't know why it's coming to lots of the council. I think it would have been more appropriate for this to be have discussed at committee. Unless I missed it, actually, I don't think I did. And for that reason, I would, you know, even without describing those two points that Deputy Mayor just said that are part of the recommendations there, I would like to propose that we defer this to the next council meeting. Gives us more time to discuss with staff, have more questions answered, more clarity. This report does seem to be very hard to understand. And I'm not 100%, I'm not 100% comfortable in supporting any of the recommendations that are on it right now, so I'd like to move, I would defer this to the next council meeting.
Okay, so there's no debate when it comes to a deferral motion? Oh, you didn't spoke to, okay, Counselor Santos, next on the list.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, we, question to staff. We did have a workshop on this, right? A workshop to deal with some of these issues, concerns regarding occupancy and standards, et cetera. We had, we had a workshop on this, yes? I attended it. I don't know, were you there, Counselor Plessy? Yeah, yeah, Allison?
Yes, through the chair, the November council workshop did address some of this topic, and we had made a commitment, staff made a commitment to report back with the amending bylaws in accordance with the referred matter from the September 18th Committee of Council meeting that directed staff to establish occupancy limits for bedrooms.
Right, so this is not the first time that we talked about this. We did have a workshop on it. It was discussed at Committee of Council in the past. We passed a motion for staff to report back. And in the workshop, staff did indicate that it was going to come back in a report to council. And so I think that number three, I don't think it's the intention of Counselor Singh to amend, to deal with the fines for repeat offenders, is it? Or is it just the number two?
Sorry, what was that?
Are you looking to amend and remove two and three?
I was, either we can, I'm okay with the repeat offender stuff.
Okay, so number three to the clerk, Mr. Mayor to the clerk, is not a strikeout. It's just number two.
We could defer that too, or we can, and I'll leave it up to my colleagues. If it's like this today, though.
Okay, so if that's the case, then because some of my colleagues maybe didn't attend the workshop or were unclear during the committee when we had this discussion, perhaps we can, I'll move to refer it to allow staff to provide some of that clarification and various information and report back on any necessary changes to the, to the next Committee of Council, which would be in January. No, it's a referral to committee. Back to staff, referral back to staff to report back to committee. You refer it to committee, you defer it to council.
The clerk for clarification?
Through Mayor Brown, refer.
We can refer a matter to another body. If we defer it, it comes back to this body. So we defer it to council. Or you can refer it to a committee or to staff.
But deferral is non-debatable, so someone that hasn't spoken.
That's why I'm referring. So I'm referring it to the next Committee of Council to allow more time for those members of council to maybe get caught up from the workshop as well as any other questions that they may have. Because certainly on this council, there are members who are very much so impacted by the occupancy overcapacity of various units in our wards, and it ties in very much so with the RRL program. And particularly the number of complaints we get from residents that there are too many people living in that house. And so we have to find a way to deal with that, 100% we do. So referral back to committee to allow more time for some members of council to get a little bit more clarification and for us to have more conversation about it as well.
Yeah, so just trying to, run the debate together. What I'm hearing is that everyone wants to deal with repeat offenders, the bad apples. But there's a need to add more language and to distinguish between family members, sons and daughters living in, you know, a large family context, which is something that we obviously have in our city. And so we want to get this language fixed, but not take away the efforts that coincides with our RRL. So I believe we have next on the, or we don't have Counselor Burr. We have the motion that's been tabled, but we have Counselor Fertini. Speaking to the referral?
No, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with it. I just agree with part of what Counselor Santos says and also Deputy Mayor. You know, when you're going back to family. But I have a couple of questions on the task force, but we took it off. How many, how many bylaws do we have on the task force? You know, yesterday.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, sorry, which task force will we refer to?
The second units.
The second units?
So Counselor Fertini, this is, speaking to the referral.
Speaking to the referral.
May?
To the clerk, yeah.
Through Mayor Brown. Just for clarity, are we referring, referring the report to committee and deferring the bylaw to the future council meeting? When we get to the bylaw section of the meeting, is that what we think? Because the bylaw won't come to Committee of Council. But this, the report could? And then bring the bylaw back as amended if there's direction given at the next committee. But speaking to that referral of this report, it really can only address who we're referring it to or at date we're referring it to.
I'll wait for the next one.
Not the, not the body of the report.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else on the board motion to refer? And defer the bylaw? All those in favor, motion carries. In the meantime, we'll get this sorted, the right language. Our next item to the clerk is 10.22. Municipal Services Corporation, and I believe, thank you, Commissioner Maholovitch, for all the hard work on this, and to smear actor, city solicitor. I believe Counselor Plessy has a motion to move this forward and pare it down a little bit. Counselor Plessy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the report, went through it as much as possible. I think it's, it's a great start and more to, more to come, for sure. I don't want this to be kind of, I don't want to be, I don't think I want it to be structured or serviced by the clerk's office, so don't want that many counselors on there. I think it's very important to have the mayor on there for now. And I don't want to, I don't want to say any individuals, but what I think is important and as equally important is the Chair of Actv and the Chair of Planning as well. I think those are positions that should help and support. Also, I'd like to see three business members from, they don't necessarily have to be from the community. We just want three very, you know, intelligent people on there, smarter than us, to, to drive that. CEOs, yes, CAOs, yes, CI, all the, they got to have some letters behind their name. Makes them smart. So I think that's important. So that's what I'd like to put forward and amend, what the, what those recommendations are, is to have those three as, and we'll say co-chairs, because if the mayor with his busy schedule wants to not chair a meeting because he is not able to attend, then maybe have the Chair of Planning, which happens to me, and the Chair of Actv have the ability to chair the meetings as well. So that's what I like to put forward, Mr. Mayor. And I also support what I believe Deputy Mayor is going to be asking for. I think three is a good number. And you have to change, it, it says for council to choose the three, and it shouldn't be council, we have a committee to select. So that would go to, you know, Counselor Vicente to, I think he's actually looking at calling a meeting anyways, so maybe a meeting also needs to be called to, how are we going to select those three? so maybe a meeting also needs to be called to, how are we going to select those three? Through Counsel Vicente's committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Singh.
Sorry, do we delete all counselors right now? Sorry, I'm just. No, 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 before it was the directors as counselors. Yeah, there you go, okay. So I think, yeah, I think, because the report says all, yeah, okay. So I think this is a good approach to get started, to figure out exactly the design and mechanism. But I'm okay with the chair idea, that's fine. And I'm okay with what I'm hearing about the Municipal Development Corporation. And I think it's a good healthy way, I think we'll figure that out there we go out. And I'm good, I just wanted to make sure that's in there too, thank you.
The mayor? Sorry, Mayor, Mayor. Through you, Mayor Brown. Just to be clear, Counselor Plessy, the mayor be appointed, the Chair of the Board of Directors, and the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, and the Chair of Economic Development?
And all three be co-chairs?
You say co-chair, not director?
Be.
Co-chairs of the.
Appointed as. Co-chairs of the.
Can we make those, make those chairs of the other committees be vice chairs?
Co-vice chairs? And three citizen members? We don't have an economic development committee.
We do.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tour. And then strike out the all.
No, no, no.
All members of the board are still in the, where, can you pull up the diagram where it says that who reports to? It's still, the committee still reports to all members. But I'm not, I'm, I'm taking all members off of the actual committee.
Oh, okay.
Then it will be supported by.
The clerk's office, and that's not what I'm.
So it's that the board directs to council?
No?
Through.
Oh, no, I think it's a mistake putting all members of council on the committee. With then three members, essentially you're starting a whole new committee that has to be supported by, by the clerk's office, which means the minutes, the public. Anything over six? Six and over.
Through the chair?
He's ex officio, he doesn't count.
So if we keep it under six, we don't require that additional resource pressure in the clerk's office. I understand the Deputy Mayor and Counselor Power are interested too, I've just, just been told. Is anyone else interested? There's a problem there, it would be on the six.
Mayor Brown, I'm happy to say whatever you like.
Okay, I'm going to, Simeon wants to make a comment.
Through the chair, for clarification purposes, I just wanted to be clear that this is intended to be essentially the inaugural board. This is not intended to be the long-term board. If, in the business case study, there is contemplation that there would be a combination of elected officials and citizen members, whether they're industry experts or business leaders, et cetera. So, and that can be determined in the future. But I, I think your suggestion for the, the mayor and the two chairs of those committees to be the inaugural board, and then we, we can use the, the end part of the sentence that says until council has established a selection of the new directors. Because, you know, identify, if we put in at this stage three citizen members, then we can't really proceed with the corporation until those three citizen members are selected.
So why not just add this in, onto our Committee of Council then? Add it to an extra, we have active on there, we have. But what you're doing now is, is not what the intention of this board.
So.
It's supposed to be arms-length.
Through the chair, that is correct. This is not intended to be a committee of council. This is supposed to create an entity that is separate from council and can operate in a more commercially focused manner. So the, I, the suggestion, from my perspective, would be in order to get this off, off the ground, bullets six one and six two be maintained. And then we can have a bullet that talks about adding additional citizen members when council is prepared to do that.
Then you're not really taking it off, like this, my intent was to take it from zero to 100. Let's go, this is what the composition should be. This is what previous work that last term determined what that kind of composition should, should look like. All members should not be sitting on this board, because then you're, you're taking this and moving it from arms-length to a political board, essentially.
So through the chair, I, I agree with the part about removing all of the members. That was intended just as a interim proposal to, to get things rolling. But I agree, it should be a combination of some elected officials and some citizen members. My proposal is that the citizen member part be left out for now and be added in the future.
So.
I still have the floor. I guess I'm okay with that, but I think it's very important to have those citizen members that are, that is their, that's their business. It's not our business, right? It's, it is not what, you know, we as the directors of this corporation are, are professionals with, in terms of the business aspect of it. We need to hire, or not hire. Wrong, choice of words. We need to have members on that, that their business is day-to-day with, you know, the businesses of corporations and assess, like essentially just CAO's and, and like I said, people smarter than any of us, to be able to make sure that this is successful. So that's why I'm driving this to be, you know, trying to drive it to be 100 and, and let's go and, and get it done. Not putting those members on, where it, it leaves us to where we are now, essentially, I think. Or, or you're, or you put whomever would choose to be on, to write a more of a term, a detailed terms of reference.
Through the chair, what was contemplated was that the, the interim board, whether it's the, the three members of council or all of council, would then work towards determining a terms of reference. I think you'll have more flexibility if you stick with just the three members of council now. And then the appointment of additional citizen members can go through the standard process that we use for committee appointments. Even, even though it's not a committee, we can use a analogous process to that. The reason that the citizen member part was not included in this report, even though that is identified in the business plan as the, the plan for this corporation, is that until, if we identify it here in this motion, no work of the board can occur.
Right.
Until that has, how does it happen?
Yeah.
And so I think bullets one, and my, my proposal would be bullets one and two. And bullets, and the other question that council may wish to debate is the number of citizen members. And that's why I didn't put a specific number in there and left that for, as a council decision at a future point in time.
Yeah, and, and forgive me, I thought three is, is that good number. But if, if, you know, people other than anybody else thinks that there should be more or should be less, like I, you know, you know, I don't want too many more because I think, and then issues can be, can be had, look at the BIA, so. But those were my comments, Mr. Chair. And I'm happy to, if council wishes, strike out three. But I think based off solicitor, I think six one, six two can be voted on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think Deputy Mayor has an idea how to bring this all together, so over to.
I thought I had an idea, but now that I'm reading this. Because the report, I was just going to approve the report. The report says all members of council, so now it looks like you're, you're suggesting something different.
So through the chair, the report said all members of council until council had established a process for the selection of new directors. So it was intended as an interim measure?
Yeah, so I agree with that, but then now you're saying I would do one and two. So that's why I'm just confused, the difference.
Well, the, the, the proposal for all members of council was one of expediency, to be honest. It, in my estimation, I proposed it as a way to minimize debate in terms of who would be on and who would be on, not, and.
I think that was wise, given what's happening now, that's probably wise.
And to give everybody the, the opportunity who wished to participate. But ideally, in the long-term, I would not suggest that this corporation have the entire board.
I don't think anybody expects it in the long-term, to be honest. I don't expect it in the long-term. But in the interim, I, I agree with the original proposal. And just get the terms of reference done, decide amongst each other how we want it to be, you know, who we want on there, but let's do that amongst each other over, when we had time. I didn't know we were going to just have a motion to appoint people today. Like I wasn't expecting that, I was expecting this, this approach forward. So I get your idea, interim, get the terms of reference, it's a clear process. And then we'll, we'll fine-tune it to limit the number of members, which is natural, has to be. And then get a citizen appointed. But I think we're just skipping a step in the middle, and that's why I was, I was looking to prove it just like this, and have everybody have a chance to be involved. And I didn't think that would be a problem today, so. I, I would like to personally go with the original report and suggestion. I think that's fair.
Deputy Mayor, I think you vote on Counselor Plessy's motion first. If that fails, then we go to the original motion. Or maybe as speakers go, we'll find a way to bring everyone on the same page. Maybe, you know, maybe this is time-lapsed, I understand what Counselor Plessy's saying. It has to be arms-length, it does. But if maybe you assign the citizen nomination committee with ability to do this work over the next three months, and you just say what the time period is. But let's hear what other counselors have to say. I think we're getting closer to having a consensus. To Counsel Maderos, followed by Counsel Fortini.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to staff for bringing this forward. I, I thank my colleagues for having supported and us looking at this. Consistent with my position last term, I, I won't be supporting this. Just the number one reason, I won't bore my colleagues with all the reasons why. But my number one reason's the accountability factor. When people vote for me, they expect the decisions at City Hall. You know, I put my name on the ballot, I'm the one who makes the decision, good or for bad. And what this does is essentially, in my mind, just from a personal perspective, takes a lot of that decision-making on important items. And especially within the context of what's happening at the region appeal. With all this uncertainty and, you know, I heard that the government's introducing legislation tomorrow. It's going to have some impacts on the region, I hear there's going to be other impacts. So I just think there's a, a lot of unanswered questions, understanding what services are coming down, understanding all the, all the issues related to it. But I do respect that, you know, my colleagues want to go forward. It seems that they want to go forward with a, a different type of service delivery model. But it's not something I can support, thank you.
Counselor, record a vote request, and Counsel Fortini.
Yeah, thank you. What's going to be the cost to set this up?
Through the chair, at this stage, at the stage of the report and the incorporation of the corporation, there are no material costs other than, you know, some legal fees for the incorporation process. This report and the business case do not speak to the subsidiaries or the individual projects that council may decide in the future to put into, into the Municipal Services Corporation. So at this stage, there are no costs.
So this is on arms-length, is what we're saying?
Through the chair, this would be a corporation that is wholly owned by the city. So it would report to the city and to council. But it would have a board that would have its own fiduciary obligations.
An arms-length. That's what I'm hearing. So if it's arms-length, why then, why is council sitting on it? Why don't we provide it on arms-length like a committee adjustment? We have nothing to do with it as a board. And reports to council, just like committee adjustment does.
So through the chair, that is an option, that if council wanted to not have any members of council sit on the board of the Municipal Services Corporation, they could do that. But it, in my estimation, it, it, there's a more appropriate balance of transparency and accountability and confidence in governance by having members of council sit on those, on, sit on the board of the Municipal Services Corporation, like we have members of council that sit on the library board or the BIA board.
Well, those, those committees are different. This is supposed to be an arms-length, what I'm hearing. Committee adjustment, we're not even allowed to come in as an arm-length. So if we're going to do an arms-length, none of us should be on it. It should be done, run by a board and report to us, that's how I feel, so I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and this question arrives from Counsel Maderos's statement on our names on the ballot and, and we're making the decision. And just for clarity for myself, this board still reports to this council to, and those decisions are still made here? Is that correct, Simeon? Through you, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
So through the chair, the board would be appointed by this council. The board and the corporation would report to this council. But when you, the last part of your question was about decisions being made. The point of having a separate corporation and board would be that that board would be empowered to make certain types of decisions. But there would be limitations on its powers.
Like committee of adjustments?
So, so through the chair, there are some limitations in the, in the municipal act with respect to holding corporations. But we could also, you know, it, it would be up to this council to determine what kind of limitations they would want to put on the powers of the corporation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Solicitor, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Fortini?
Yeah, just a follow-up, since you said under Minnesota, can you provide all those, what, to us after?
Sorry, through the chair, could you clarify your question?
You said there's certain factors, like the board can make decisions on their own, without council, under the municipal act, so I just like to know if I could have that, the copy, what they can do, what they can't do.
Sure, through the chair, the, the municipal act has, the regulations under the act have one section.
Yeah, just send it to me, just send it, thank you.
Okay, no other questions, we have Counsel Plessy's motion first. And if, and if, request for a court of vote, and if unsuccessful, we will table Counselor Singh's motion.
Thank you, through, through you, Mayor. It's been requested that for recorded votes, we rise, so all in favor?
I'll, I'll, I'll remove my motion.
Okay.
So just on the motion as amended on screen. And would all those in favor of this motion, please stand? So I see Counsel Santos, Counsel Vicente, Counsel Baur, Counsel Plessy, Counsel Keenan, Deputy Mayor Singh, and Mayor Brown. And in opposition? Oh, yes. In opposition, Counsel Maderos, Counsel Fortini, Counsel Power, and Counsel Tour. How do you vote?
I will vote in favor.
And that vote is carried.
Okay, so that deals with item 12.10.2.2. This takes us to, we took 10.31 into consent after initially.
That's right, and it's 10.3.2 next.
So Counsel Plessy, 10.3.2, prepayment agreements to incentivize housing developments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Discussions with staff, planning, corporate services, we're looking to defer this to the new year.
Okay, all those in favor of the deferral, motion carries. This takes us to, we did prop name and consent. The next item. 12.5 held by Counsel Plessy, I believe that was for the purpose. 12.5 held by Counsel Plessy, I believe that was for the purpose of other items, right?
For 13.1, yes.
Okay, so should we deal with 13.1 and 2 now? Who held 13.1 and 2, I think it was Counsel Plessy.
I did, yeah, but 13.2 is just approval, unless Counsel Power would like to speak on it, but 13.1, happy to speak on, Mr. Mayor?
Can you speak on 13.1, please?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, it's, this is, we struggle with this one, it's a very difficult area, like I said, at planning on Monday, there isn't anything higher than two stories around this, in this section, it's of Brampton, it's, and I wanna be very clear, this isn't us being imby, you know, Ward 6 is taking more units, more people than any other ward in the city of Brampton combined. Ward 6 is taking more units than any other municipality in the region appeal, Ward 6 alone. But when we're talking about planning and places to grow, this isn't, this isn't an area that, that we can get behind, it's adjacent to a natural heritage feature, right next to single detached homes that have been screaming for us to help with the amount of overflow parking from the mall that's, that's just south of them, and we try, we try to get in there as much as possible, we've implemented no parking on the street, people still park, we don't have the officers to go out there every day and ticket, but we sure could, and I'd like to, maybe at a future meeting, start purchasing our own tow trucks, and just have one sit there every day, next to Good Life, and tow the people that are, that are parking in these, in this community. And there's also, you know, there's things that can be done, and, you know, with the potential to have only parking for the residents, or fencing off the entire subdivision, so that people aren't parking and walking through, like, you might as well just end up, you know, you could call it a different community altogether, but I think Counsel Barr, I'm certainly gonna support a, you know, referral to, or deferral to the new year, I'm not going to move the deferral, because I'm speaking to it, but we're both in agreement that we can't get behind this, it's not, it's not what this community wants, and, you know, you look at just, just north of this area, there was original, across from, across from Regan Rogue Dwar, there was original 12-story building contemplated way back in 2013, 14, that had then removed the stories and thought about putting in towns, and very similar situation, and so I don't know what the developers purchased this plot of property for, it's not my concern, but if they wanna do something, they wanna build units here, then, you know, maybe we can get behind some townhouses that are, that don't spill out onto McLaughlin Road or something to the effect, but as of right now, we can't seem to get behind this, it's too difficult area with a McLaughlin Road that can never be widened either, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Barr.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, definitely echoing some of the concerns in this area, would like to put a deferral. Yes, to the new year, and supporting Counsel Plessy and everything.
All those in favor of the deferral, motion carries. This takes us to 13.2, I do have a question on this, I was speaking to Counsel Power about this, obviously, the ward councillors are gonna get the most feedback, this one's been a little bit controversial, I've certainly got a lot of emails and WhatsApp messages about it, this is the file that previously went to the OLT, and the applicant won at the OLT, and so the city didn't think it was the right density for that location, opposed it, and lost at the OLT, and I understand from Counsel Power, they're actually coming back for less floors than they already approved for, and so we'd likely lose again, so for anyone interested, could you clarify that, and there's no point of having the city in a, wasting taxpayer dollars on an OLT appeal that we've already lost once?
Sure, through you, Mayor Brown, you're correct that the original application, staff wrote a positive recommendation report, that was in the last term of council, council at the time chose to not support staff's recommendation, the applicant took the matter to the OLT, the applicant was successful at the OLT, but since then, the applicant through various iterations has worked with staff and the residents to come back with a proposal that was brought forth at the November 4th Planning Committee, that proposal, as you rightfully said, is, I guess, less intrusive on the existing community, and is less density and massing and whatnot, and the proposal clearly outlined all of the traffic, 45-degree angular plane, and in fact, the new proposal removes some of the townhomes that were on the rear of the property, flanking the existing residential, to give more privacy to the existing community, so staff, again, are supportive of the current proposal.
Just to become completely blunt on this, they're asking for less density than they've already been approved for, from the OLT, and so for those that oppose this, it would be a complete waste of taxpayer resources to relitigate something that we've already lost.
Through you, Mayor Brown, while I can't speak for what an OLT decision would make, it would be highly unlikely that the city or anybody would be successful at an OLT hearing to challenge this.
If they're asking for less than they've already won, okay, so it is what it is, Counsel Power and Fortini, you're okay with? Counsel Fortini?
Yeah, and they kinda figured out, when did this application actually originate? I remember last term, we voted against it, for the, so it's no more 10 stories, it's less, or just, still the 10 stories, they removed the townhouses.
Through the chair, the exact date as to when it originated, I don't recall, but I do recall it was last, it was last term, it is now a 10-story, the overall, while the density is the same, the overall massing is spread out differently, so the intrusiveness on the existing community is far less than.
Yeah, I remember this, you're right, and this was a sliver of land, I remember, so we didn't accept it last term, we voted against it, and he went to anyone, so how could we communicate with these residents, because I have a group here, and they're already, we're going back and forth, and I said to them, we did not support it last term, I was the one who brought it forward, but unfortunately, we lost our court hearing, so how do we communicate with these people, saying it's not the city, it's not Counsel Power, it's not Counsel Fortini, it's not the mayor, but we lost our hearing, and unfortunately, this so is.
Through you, Mayor Brown, through to Counsel Fortini, pending council's decision today, staff could certainly work to prepare a bit of a communication piece for the ward councillors to send out through any social media or whatnot, for those listening online who don't understand today's deliberation.
Yeah, and I wish some updates for future things, okay, thank you, so you can send it to my office, and I can send it out to them, and say, you know, like, we don't wanna waste more money, and I don't believe it, thank you.
Maybe the, Counsel Power?
Thank you, through the mayor, just to clarify, we did lose at OLT, the four major issues that the residents had, and I've spoken with the residents on numerous occasions, one was the angular plane, this new iteration covers off the angular plane at 45 degrees, two was the school board, having an influx of density in that area, the school boards, both, both school boards, public and the Dufferin-Pio School Board, both said it wouldn't impact any, any classes or any capacity within their schools in that catchment. Traffic, the traffic studies were done within the last six months, both at peak times and off-peak times, and then the fourth one was the park, they were mentioning that the park would be overutilized because of this development, and the developer has, because they removed the townhomes, but to the adjacent homes, the developer has put in two parks on this property proposal, so as the commissioner had said, if it went back to OLT, we wouldn't win, so, thank you.
Okay, and maybe even the motion, you could, the ward councillors could add in, given the OLT decision. So we could work on wording, just write in the motion very clear.
It could be, through you, Mayor Brown, it could be just based on the previous OLT decision, I would keep it simple as that, and then staff can work with the ward councillors on any communication.
Okay, and just echo what Counsel Fortini and Power have said, there is, there is a lot of feedback on this one. Okay, 13.1, moved by Counsel Fortini, seconded by Counsel Power, in light of the OLT decision added, previous OLT decision being added to the language, all those in favor, motion carries. Now we have to approve 12.5, which was the minutes that encapsulates all this, moved by Counsel Plessy, seconded by Counsel Santos, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, I think we put that on consent, didn't we? So this takes us to new business, I believe, right? Oh, sorry, 16.2 has been removed from Counsel Santos, the new business is Counsel Keenan's motion. Counsel Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for your indulgence on this, so on October 30th of this year, Brampton lost a beacon in our community, Ronald Webb, who unexpectedly passed away at the young age of 91. So on behalf of Mayor Brown and my council colleagues, I want to offer our condolences to the Webb family. Ron and his wife Nancy moved to Brampton in 1957, where he teamed up with Grenville Davis and his son, the former premier, the Honorable Bill Davis, at their law firm. Ron served on numerous boards, including Peel Regional Police Services, Sheridan College, and the Peel Memorial Hospital, among other boards. He was well-known for his razor-sharp mind, fair and balanced perspective, dry humor, and quick wit, it is truly an honor that Ron called Brampton home, and I hope that we at the city can honor him and his contributions to the city appropriately, so I do have a motion that will follow this, just that staff be requested to report back on potential opportunities for the inclusion of Ronald Webb in a commemorative naming within Brampton, so that will be my motion after Counsel Plessy speaks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Plessy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can't add anything that Counsel Keenan has said, Ron was a pioneer, I've known him for over 30 years, he did tremendous amount of work for, you know, residents of Brampton that will never even know the work that he did, so I'm happy to support this, thank you Counsel Keenan for bringing this forward, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and just fixing the spelling of his name, and obviously a great, extraordinary Bramtonian, had the pleasure of talking to him on many occasions, had the suggestion of former premier Bill Davis, and just an extraordinary Canadian, so very appropriate to have this recognition, thank you Counsel Keenan for thinking of this. Moved by Counsel Keenan, seconded by Counsel Plessy, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to public question period, any questions? Seeing, not anything submitted online?
Through you, Mayor Brown, there's no questions online at this time.
This takes us to bylaws, we have a motion moved by Counsel Keenan, seconded by Counsel Maderos, to approve bylaws 181, 2024 to 218, 2024 inclusive, all those in favor? With the exception of the amending? 18.38. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to closed session, I have a motion moved by Counsel Santos, seconded by Counsel Power, to move into closed session to deal with the following items, and the court will list items that are going to closed. Okay, so we're gonna go back at 1 o'clock.
In close.
In close.
So what, do you motion to go into closed? Do you motion to go into closed now?
Motion to go into closed, motion to go into closed from Counsel Fortini, seconded by Counsel Barr, all those in favor, motion carries. session any outcomes from today's closed session business, as a result of closed session today, I wish to report the following, and the clerk will put it on the screen. Okay, nineteen point four, nineteen point one to three was approved on consent and not discussed, nineteen point four, uh, this item was approved on consent and, and direction deemed given, including the following motion to be considered in open session, moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Vicente, that the commissioner of planning, building, and growth management be delegated authority to execute a lease agreement and all other agreements and documents necessary to affect a lease with Punjabi Community Health Services to continue to operate the Brampton Bike Hub from the city-owned property municipally known as Eight Nelson Street West, Unit One oh four, all those in favor, motion carries. Item nineteen point five, this item was considered in closed session, no direction was given, nineteen point six item was considered in closed session and direction was given, nineteen point seven item was approved on consent and not discussed, nineteen point eight item was approved on consent and direction deemed given, including the following motion to be considered in open session, moved by-
Wait, 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 is this all the items except the one I, or should I walk out now? Or the- Yeah, the one item, which was, uh-
That you declared a conflict.
Yeah. I don't remember the number.
Nineteen point eight.
Was it nineteen point eight?
Yes.
Okay. No, it's not that one.
Nineteen point eight. I'll double check.
Yeah.
I don't know, but it's two points six.
Thank you. Nineteen point six, and that item is there, and direction was given, but, uh, can you pull that out and vote on it separately so I can be outside for that, please? Maybe, or I could just leave for the whole thing, if that's easier.
To you, Mayor, you did remove yourself for anything in closed session?
Yeah.
So, there's no vote on it in open?
Okay, perfect, okay. Okay, okay, so I wasn't there, and I will fill out the form and send it to your office as well, because I forgot to, uh, I do it at the beginning, okay? Yeah, so I am, yeah, okay.
Okay, nineteen point eight, moved by, the, the, which ward is this in?
One.
One, moved by councillor Santos, seconded by councillor Vicente, the commissioner of planning, building, and growth management be delegated authority to execute on behalf of the city of the agreement of purchase and sale and any other agreements, documents necessary for the completion of the city's acquisition of thirty James Street Brampton on terms directed by council, otherwise on terms acceptable to the senior manager of realty services in a form acceptable to the city solicitor or designate, all those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to nineteen point nine, item was considered in closed session and no direction was given. This takes us to confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by councillor Vicente and seconded by councillor, um, Pleschy to appro, approve the confirming bylaw and confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting, all those in favor, motion carries. Adjournment, our last item of business is item twenty-one, um, council's next scheduled to meet Wednesday, January twenty-second at nine thirty AM, I have a motion moved by councillor Santos, seconded by deputy mayor Singh to adjourn today's meeting, all those in favor, motion carries.